Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Central Unified. Today is July 23rd, 2024. The time is exactly 6:00 PM. We are here in the district office. Let the attendance show that we are missing Vice President Correa. All others are in attendance, but I have a motion to adopt the agenda. So we had a motion by trustee Krefan, a second by trustee Solis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 6-0. Do we have any comments from the public on any closed session items at this time?
We have no comments.
We'll just wait a few more seconds. And with that, we'll go ahead and move to closed session. We will reconvene back and open at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
...
[705.36]
He was here?
Yeah.
He's in the back.
Good evening and welcome back as we reconvene back in open session. Today is the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Central Unified. Today is July 23rd, 2024. The time is now 7:02 PM. And I will ask Trustee Sellers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome back as we reconvene back in open session. Today is the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Central Unified. And I will ask Trustee Sellers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome back as we reconvene back in open session. Today is the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Central Unified. And I will ask Trustee Sellers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome back as we reconvene back in open session. Today is the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Central Unified. And I will ask Trustee Sellers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome back as we reconvene back in open session. Today is the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Central Unified. And I will ask Trustee Sellers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome back as we reconvene back in open session. Today is the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Central Unified. And I will ask Trustee Sellers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome back as we reconvene back in open session. Today is the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Central Unified. And I will ask Trustee Sellers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome back as we reconvene back in open session. Today is the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Central Unified. And I will ask Trustee Sellers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome back as we reconvene back in open session. Today is the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Central Unified. Today is July 23rd, 2024. The time is now 7:02 PM. And I will ask Trustee Sellers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome back as we reconvene back in open session. Today is the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Central Unified.
Thank you. There is a resolution on tonight's agenda proclaiming August as National Immunization Awareness Month. I want to draw that to your attention. Also want to congratulate the 14 additional students who last week graduated following their summer program to complete their high school experience and earn their diploma with the class of 2024. And keep an eye out, I know, on media currently they're running the Honored Scholars segment through the summer and six of our students are highlighted in that, so I hope you see that. You may also have seen on media that last week at the tail end of our summer program, our SROs Fresno PD created a parade route for our students to make it from their summer program campus to the El Paso Movie Theater. And it was quite a spectacle to get them from one spot to the other and drew a lot of attention and they did an outstanding job and there's some great stories about a lot of students who were sharing their first experience at the movie theater together. So, pretty cool event. Great job to the team on all that was done for our summer programming. I can't believe I'm saying it, but Administrators return next week. It is the start of a new school year and I think we just blinked our eyes from the end of the other, but our Fall Administrative Institute does begin on Tuesday, so Dr. Boatwright and her team are busy pulling together what our July 30th and 31st work will be. And then school offices will open to the public on August 5th, so you'll start seeing some advertising for that as well. And probably are already seeing media about secondary events, when to get your textbooks, when schedules and activities are there for the start of the school year. So, I guess I should say welcome to the 24-25 school year. Thank you.
Any other board communications at this time? With that, we move on to comments from the public on items not on the agenda. Do we have any, Clerk Kerfong?
Yes. President Singh, we have Shiri Alexander here. Yep, you can walk up to the podium.
Please join us, yeah.
And once you hit the button to start, turn on your mic, you'll have three minutes.
Hello to the Board President, I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, Nadeep, and the Board members. I am here to let you know about a problem regarding my son Logan, who has cerebral palsy and is legally blind. I have brought my son's medical diagnosis about his blindness, not just low vision, and I was told that the district didn't want to address that disability until later at the triennial IAP. I also have no information about who helped administer the EpiPen to Logan. Finally, Logan is sensitive to the sun and requires help in toileting because of his disability. Logan had asked to go to the bathroom twice and was refused, which is a basic human right, and he was refused, by the school aide and the teacher. Sadly, his teacher has refused to assign him a spot out of the sun several times. His aide has refused to take him to the bathroom when he needs to go. The last time this happened, Logan had to wait an hour to go to the bathroom. I have asked many times for the district to accommodate Logan's cerebral palsy and now his legal blindness. With no health plan to address Logan's medical needs and food allergies, he is at risk for further harm. Please make your staff comply with the law and act to keep Logan safe. Thank you for your time in this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
Any other comments from the public at this time?
No other comments at this time.
Do we have any comments for those viewing online?
We have no comments from the public.
Thank you. Then with that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Again, as Superintendent Davis shared, we are adopting a resolution with regards to proclaiming August as National Immunization Awareness Month. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Sellers, a second by trustee Kerfond. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. We move on to our action items for the evening. Our first action item, M1, is Adopt Resolution 2425-01, ordering an election to authorize the issuance of school bonds establishing specifications of the election order and requesting consolidation with other elections occurring on November 5th, 2024. Assistant Superintendent Ikbal. Yes.
All right. Good evening. Administration is recommending the board adopt Resolution 2425-01, ordering an election, authorize the issuance of school bond for the election November 5th, 2024. I just want to remind that, please, we need two-thirds or five votes is needed for approval. And any questions we have regarding the board?
Trustee Kerfond?
Thank you, President Singh. I'm looking at the language you provided on our agenda today, and it has a number on it for $109 million bond, although the board has not yet made a decision on whether we wanted to do, which of the two options were presented to us, 109 or 126. Since there's not much of a difference, I'd like to make a motion to amend that item to include 126.
We have a motion. Do we have a second or a question on?
Question.
Did a second then?
What was the rationale?
So I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay, thank you.
Please proceed with the...
What was your rationale that you picked in that number?
We had a survey then.
So in the survey, we tested two different bond amounts, the 126 million and 109 million. The difference between the two dollar amounts basically had to do with the tax rate. So at the $109 million amount, the tax rate would not be increased. It would stay the same as it is today or in 2324. And so, based on the survey results, it was about five percentage points higher. At the end of the survey, when we asked if the voters were going to vote yes or no on the bond, it was about a five percentage point increase from 69% for the $126 million bond to 74% with the $109 million bond that didn't increase tax rates. When we just ask about the tax rate itself and ask if you're more or less likely to vote for the bond because of the tax rate, if the tax rate was remaining the same, 66% of voters said they'd be more likely to vote for the bond versus about 49% if the tax rate was basically the full $60 per 100,000 of assessed value, which is what we're allowed to ask for under Prop 39. So, that's the key difference. For the $126 million bond, the tax rate would need to be increased at its max, about $30 per 100,000. Over the next six years, the average increase would be about $24 per 100,000. And then it would drop down because old bonds are getting paid off, so it'd actually kind of then be below the... It'd be kind of at the... below current tax rate. So, it'd be about $24 increase for the next six years.
So, can you repeat that again? So for the 109, we had a 60%...
109, it was 74% yes, lean yes. For 126, it was 69% yes, lean yes.
Trustee Kerfond?
I'm looking at the attachment to our agenda on the survey results. It'd be $126 million about language. After the information was received, it goes up from 65% yes, 9% lean yes. We're talking about over 70... Like nearly 75% of voters surveyed approved the $126 million as well. My understanding is that there isn't really much of a price difference either for our average taxpayer. The $109 million bond is roughly 5 cents per $100, and the $126 million is 6 cents per $100. Is that correct?
The difference, yeah, over the life of the bond, that's probably correct. Sorry, I'm trying to do it from memory. Because the... At some point, the tax rates, all of the... The prior bond tax rates are dropping. So with the tax rate, the $109 million bond that's not increasing tax rates, there's really about a six-year period where we're not utilizing the full $60 per 100,000 with the $109 million bond. That's the difference. So yes, it's probably, you know...
Pennies.
Somewhere in that five... Well, maybe $10 per 100,000 of assessed value, so...
Okay, $10 per 100,000? Okay, thank you. That's... Which comes out to about 1 cent per $100.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, so my motion is to amend this because we hadn't made a decision as a board on which version we want, we preferred. And my preference is the 126 million.
So we have a motion by trustee Kerfond. We have a second by myself. Just a reminder, we will need, on this particular item, for a school bond, we will need five votes.
And we may need a more robust motion because it's not simply changing the dollar amount, the 126. We'll need to also remove all references to the tax rates, you know, not being increased. So that appears in probably, I think, four different paragraphs, including the 75-word statement. So we may need a little bit more direction about all of the various changes that would need to happen. Otherwise, we may need to come back for a special board meeting.
The reason I need to make this motion is because the board hadn't indicated a preference yet. We were under the impression that we would be able to decide which of these two options were tonight, and we were not given that option. So that's why I'm making this motion, to clarify.
So those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
No.
Nay.
Just to clarify, so those in aye were trustee Kerfond, trustee Cervantes, and myself. Those saying nay are trustee Sellers, trustee Mailing, and trustee Solis. So the motion, as presently amended by trustee Kerfond, does not pass. Is there any alternative? Or do we have another motion for this?
Chair, can I make a motion to approve the item as presented?
So we have a motion by trustee Solis for the item as presented for 109 million.
Second.
We have a second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Those abstaining? So motion carries five to one, and one not present. So the five voting in support of are trustee Kerfond, Sellers, myself, trustee Solis, and trustee Cervantes, and trustee Mailing voting nay.
President Singh?
Yes.
I'd just like to state for the record that that 1 cent difference for the average taxpayer would have covered modernizing another school site in Central Unified. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to item M2, Approve Proposition 28, Arts and Music in Schools: AMS Funding Guarantee and Accountability Act. Director Warland.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Davis. We are recommending approval of Proposition 28, Art and Music in Schools: Funding Guarantee and Account... Excuse me, Accountability Act. This item also includes the data report, which is an overview of our school site's plans. In addition, certification of use of funds. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
I think the only one, Director Warland, I would just... And I know with Proposition $28, the money is... This is the first time that we are kind of coming up with school plans. My only suggestion would be in the future. I did have an opportunity to review a number of them. It's just possibly providing more details. And I believe that will come as we review them. But I mean, that was just something that I would just like to see in the future.
Absolutely. I think it's very reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, do I have a motion? Oh, sorry, trustee Solis.
Just a follow-up on another item that you brought. Are you in delivery of your piano?
I'm sorry?
Are you in delivery of your piano?
Not yet. That was just approved. But I'm so excited. I've had people at the district office ask me if we're going to have a ribbon cutting. I thought that was pretty cute.
All right, thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Solis, a second by trustee Kerfond. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Those abstaining? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. We next move on to hold a public hearing and approve Williams Uniform Complaints Procedure. Dr. Boatwright?
Yes, thank you. So the Williams Uniform Complaint Procedure provides information on reported deficiencies of sufficient materials for students or complaints regarding facilities. There was one facility deficiency reported for this quarter. There was a concern that was raised regarding having an appropriate number of restroom fixtures for transitional kindergarten students at a school site. The Facilities Department has confirmed that the fixture count is appropriate. And then the principal of that school site is working towards mitigating some of the other concerns that were mentioned in that complaint. Administration is recommending that the board hold a public hearing and then approve the July Quarterly Williams Complaint Procedure.
Thank you. We will go ahead and open the Williams Uniform Complaints Hearing at this time? And allow any other public comments or... Trustee Kerfond, have we received anything at this time?
None at this time, President Singh.
Ms. Lopez, have we received any?
We have no calls at this time.
Then we will go ahead and close our Williams Uniform Complaint Procedure. And do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I heard trustee Sellers first and then trustee Kerfond. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries 6-0. We move on to... Thank you. We move on to item number four, approving naming of facilities for sports monument signs for soccer and ball fields at Justin Garza High School. Director Rodriguez.
Thank you, Board President. Board of Trustees and Superintendent Davis. Tonight, this item returns to the board regarding the naming of the three monument signs for our athletics complex project. In your attachment, Exhibit A shows what the proposed design of the monument would look like. Also in your attachment is Exhibit B, that shows three areas of the proposed locations for the monument signs. Two are at the Futsal Court area, to be seen from the north and southbound traffic on Grantland Avenue. The third monument sign is slated to be in front of the basketball court area at the existing Justin Garza parking lot. Administration is recommending that the Board of Trustees provide staff direction on either to remove all monument signs from the project, approve staff suggested naming, or to initiate the process of naming of the monument signs pursuant to Board Policy 7310, which is included in your attachment. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this item.
Thank you. Comments from the board or questions? Trustee Solis?
More of a statement than a question. Since it's our anticipation that we're going to have outside groups wanting to use these facilities, there's an expectation that we could invite outside tournaments to utilize the facility. I think it's an excellent opportunity to sell our district. And because of that, as well as some arguments I've heard about other fields, I would like to see the fields name something that reflects the district, such as Central Ball Fields or something along that line. That would encourage ownership of everyone in the district for these facilities since basically everyone in the district is going to have the opportunity to use these facilities. In the past, what happens when we give them a name, and not necessarily wrongly, but a certain community takes ownership of that field and they seem to think they have the say over what happens to that field. So because of that and because of the diverseness of the use of these fields, I think we need to have our district's name reflected in the name of these facilities. That's it.
I think I'd like to say I agree with that. And if you pass by the stadium today, it says Central Unified, and that was put up shortly after Garza was open. It kind of embraces the entire district as opposed to maybe individualizing a particular school because it is community of the entire district. I think I really like that Central Unified theme. Thank you.
May I ask a clarification question, just on either of you or any of the other board members? So there are two, at this point, two sort of different areas that we're looking at. One, the ball fields that are at least adjacent to the Justin Garza High School campus. And then, of course, the soccer complex in the Futsal that is more towards the Darren Collegian sort of side, not exactly adjacent to the Justin Garza campus. Are we suggesting the Central Unified names for both? Or are we differentiating between the two?
I'm referring to the Futsal and the soccer fields.
So specifically, you're referring to the both.
Yeah, but I wouldn't be... I wouldn't be closed off to maybe a corporate sponsorship and somebody's name on there either. And I didn't see that in here. But I think we should leave our options open. I'm not sure what the timeline, we have to make our decision. But I do like the Central Unified if we had to pick one or the other.
Trustee Kerfond and trustee Sellers?
Thank you, President Singh. So, can you remind us how much it's going to cost us to install these signs?
So the installation will be within the actual contract when we bid it out. So, I believe I provided a cost of these items. So if the savings, if we remove all signs, savings is approximately $40,000 each. I would say about half of that cost is the installation.
So it would cost us $40,000 to install these signs?
Yeah, round about.
Okay, so...
Well, you have three of them.
So 120, then. So I guess I wonder, because I think trustee Cervantes toward the end made a good point. Many other organizations, schools, reach out to the community and there can be a corporate sponsorship or a nonprofit sponsoring the name. I believe a naming venture like that could end up saving us quite a bit of money, if not raising more than the project costs. I know Fresno State, they stole their stadium naming... I know Fresno State, they sold their stadium naming rights for $10 million, so I think it might be worth investigating on if we can recoup some of our funds by going out to the public, seeing who's interested in bidding on the name.
Trustee Sellers, and then Trustee Solis.
I want to clarify that the baseball fields are a part of Justin Garza High School, correct?
Correct.
And the soccer fields and the footsall fields are open to the entire district. They're part of the community. So, I would support the idea and concept of naming the baseball fields, keeping the Justin Garza title, and with the soccer complex, renaming that something along the lines of Central Unified Soccer Complex to instill ownership in the entire community that this is their soccer complex.
Trustee Solis.
And basically, that was gonna be my comment, that the ball fields are a part of Garza, and we always have the option of having someone adopt those ball fields. So, I totally agree. The only reason I don't agree for the soccer is because of the multiple use of the soccer fields and footsall. I mean, we're gonna have our school teams play there properly, we're gonna have our what we call support leagues wanna play there. There's a good chance we're gonna have outside league final games played there, and all that is a chance. And this board has said in the past, we need to sell our brand. I'd like to have our brand on that item, so when the invitations go out, it's Central Soccer Field, the location, to have our name on it. So, that's the only reason I'm saying that, the multiple use of the field. And yes, I totally agree, if we wanna put out for corporate sponsorship for the ball fields, I'd support that 100%.
Trustee Kerfan.
Is it possible we can separate this into two separate votes, then? Because I feel that if we're just gonna name it Central Unified Soccer Field, that sounds a bit generic to me, and I'd rather save the taxpayer $40,000 in that case, and just recoup that back into our general fund.
The motion can go however the board, whatever the board's pleasure is.
I'll make a motion, but what is the name that we have consensus of? Central Unified Soccer Fields?
Complex.
Complex. Central Unified Soccer Complex? That's my motion.
So, the first motion that we have by Trustee Solis, just to say it again out loud, is that the soccer complex would be named Central Unified Soccer Complex.
Second motion.
Can you clarify what the third monument is, or is that gonna be a separate vote?
It looks like it's a separate vote.
So, the two, then?
Correct. Yeah. So, we have a motion by Trustee Solis, we have a second by Trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Those abstaining. Motion carries five one, with a made by Trustee Kerfan.
And then, I would like to make a motion to open up the naming process for the remaining monument, allowing the administration to go into a corporate or nonprofit sponsorship option for naming rights.
So, we have a -- so, we have a motion of to tell the administration to begin soliciting potential community or corporate sponsorship.
For the baseball fields or for the soccer?
For the baseball. Soccer has already been approved.
Okay, so for the baseball field?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Trustee Kerfan.
Second.
We have a second by Trustee Solis. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Those abstaining?
Aye.
Okay. So, it was four, one, one. We had Trustee Sellers abstaining, and was it Trustee Mailing voting against? Thank you. And those are the -- do we have to have a third motion? Sorry?
No, that covers...
Those covers the two. Okay.
Can I just clarify really quick?
Yes, please.
So, the two monuments that flank the soccer complex, both on the western side, north and south along Grantland, those are Central Unified Soccer Complex, and the one right out in front of the basketball courts of Justin Garza High School is the one that we'll refer to our board policy on advertising and promotion and bring back some next steps to seek corporate sponsorship for that facility.
Or a community nonprofit. Trustee Servantes.
My question is, in the event that we don't find somebody, what happens? So, we go back to the drawing board in regards to what we're going to approve or not approve, or what name it's gonna stay with? What happens at that point?
Follow-up with that. That's a good question, and how long is the naming rights gonna last?
Leave that up to administration to devise a contract with that and bring it to us for approval.
Superintendent Davis?
We'll have to bring back an item. Director Rodriguez, essentially, we'll have to pull this item probably out of bid. You'll move forward with the two that you have action on, and then we'll have to bring back an item and look and get some clarification on our current board policy around paid advertisements. It's specific to billboards and scoreboards, so we'll have to check a little bit into what you're referring to, and then we'll bring that back.
Trustee Solis.
Don't wanna seem too greedy on the deal, but we're talking one name for one ball field, or we're talking one name for all the baseball fields?
One name for the entire baseball complex.
Okay. I would like to entertain, if there is enough competition, and we get a lot of people that wanna do it, we give each one of them a ball field. That's it.
Superintendent Davis?
Can I clarify really quick, so I make sure? When I look at your attachment, Exhibit A, what I'm understanding is that the entrance of the northern portion of Justin Garza's campus, north of the aquatics center where the basketball courts are, at that entrance, when you walk in, you're either gonna go left to Collegian Stadium, or you're gonna go right to Justin Garza's fields, courts, pool, it's that entire side of the campus.
Yes.
We're not talking about the discreet names of each of the play fields. Or are we? I think we need direction from you on what we're speaking of, because the item is the monument that sits at the front entrance.
Either way, with the ball fields, you're either gonna have to number them or give them a letter, because we have multiple ball fields. So, all I'm saying is, if there's an interest, which I don't know that there is or there isn't, but if there is, we can let a corporate person have each one of the ball fields. One, they're paying for that one, somebody else is paying for the other ball field, and similar for the pool complex. If there's no interest, okay, we can't sell something that there's nothing there. But we're gonna have to designate the ball field something, else you're not gonna know when you make a reservation what ball field you're gonna get. So, whether you give them a number or a letter or a name, it doesn't make any difference.
Trustee Sellers.
I just wanna clarify on that. As far as the ball fields are, do we already have terminology for them? It's a varsity field, it's a JV field?
Aquatics, basketball courts.
Yeah.
Does Superintendent, does the administration feel that they have enough information on this item to move forward?
Well, we understand the vote taken, but I believe the additional question of what happens if there is not a corporate sponsor that becomes the naming of the monument, or you want it to be more temporary, that we'll bring back for another discussion, it sounds like, just based on the vote that's been made, and recognizing the question that's not been answered, which is what happens if we don't have one.
Thank you. Sure. Trustee Sellers.
The price that is allocated to each sign, as time is going on, things are, prices are going up, what would be your recommendation for, before you start to see a significant increase?
Well, as Superintendent mentioned, that particular one, I would probably pull that out of the bid to give us a little more time.
Okay.
Obviously, yeah, the cost will increase, but it's concrete, rebar, lettering. I don't see a significant increase just on the monument, but at some point, we need to make a decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to item M5, Accept Gifts to District. Assistant Superintendent Ikba.
Good evening again. The district has received three gifts. Staff is recommending the board accept the gifts to the district. As follow-up, thank you letter will be sent to the donors.
Questions or comments from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Servantes, a second by Trustee Mailing. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries six zero, and we want to thank those providing these gifts. We move on to item number six, Approve Publicly Available Pay Schedules. Assistant Superintendent Collegian.
Thank you, President Singh, Board of Trustees. As a public agency that participates in the public retirement system, state law does require that annually, annually, we publicly make available our pay schedules to be approved by the Board of Trustees every year. Attached are the salary schedules that have previously been approved and adopted by the Board of Trustees that represent the pay rates for the 24-25 fiscal year for the purposes of determining the amount of what's referred to as compensational-earnable, compensation earnable pursuant to Government Code 507.5. Pay schedules are currently available on our website at centralunified.org. Under the tab, Human Resources menu, administration is recommending that this annual item be approved by the Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Trustee Sellers, a second by Trustee Solis. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries six zero. Thank you. We move on to item number seven, Approve Nominations for the Fresno Committee on School District Organization. Superintendent Davis.
Sure. This item returns to you from the last meeting. There is an open seat if anyone else is interested in joining Trustee Servantes on this committee.
Questions or comments on this item? How often do they meet? Once every?
Three months.
Three months.
If nobody else is interested, I'll throw my hat, and if somebody else wants it, speak up.
I have a question, Trustee Servantes. What kind of work does this committee do?
Great question. Predominantly, it's an oversight committee that monitors what's going on within the entire...
Sorry, Trustee Servantes, can you make sure your microphone's on?
So, just per se, like, there's some things in the works. We're consolidating some of the school districts because they can't self-sustain themselves, and when that process happens, approving it, some other legal legalities within the district that come up to be either denied or approved. Very similar to what we do here, just on a larger scale, but not as often, once every three months. It's a very easy position, to be perfectly honest.
Thank you.
Good group of people.
So, we have Trustee Solis interested. Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
Fall.
So, we have a motion to approve Trustee Solis, and we have a second by Trustee Mailing. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries six zero. Welcome to the team, Trustee Solis.
We'll follow up on all the documents that are needed.
We move on to information items. Item number one, Receive Information on Parsec Education. Assistant Superintendent Boe Wright.
Thank you. So, Parsec provides a service that will allow us to quickly and effectively monitor student achievement along with effectiveness of our instructional programs. The Parsec dashboard creates reports with a 360-degree view of students' educational experience through the analysis of both quantitative and qualitative data. One feature of Parsec, for example, will allow us to send a question out to students, staff, or parents in multiple languages. Their responses can be quickly analyzed and then added with a report on program evaluation. That would be a new feature for us. Administration is recommending that this item be placed on the August 13 board agenda for action. I do have here tonight Eugene Parks and Summer Whitley from Parsec, and I know they'd be happy to assist with any questions that you may have.
Trustee Servantes.
Sounds like a great program. What are we doing now?
So, currently, we have, well, we have a number of things. So, we have Illuminate, which is a contract that was approved tonight. If this, we have this approval for this one-year contract, and this works out for us, then we would release Illuminate. We also have a Thought Exchange. This product could also replace Thought Exchange in the future, but we would want to try this out for a year before we, you know, release any of those other contracts.
Who else in the general area is utilizing this program?
So, I know they have a contract with Fresno Unified. Would you like them to come up to the microphone? Of course.
Sure.
Good evening. We have quite a few partners here in the Valley. Fresno Unified, Madera Unified, Sanger Unified. I can continue on if you want me to, but quite a few here in the area.
Great. And the funding is coming from LCFF or General?
LCFF, yes.
Thank you.
We have questions from Trustee Sellers, and then Trustee Solis.
My questions have been answered. Thank you.
Trustee Solis.
Can you describe the security procedures in your program?
Eugene, you wanna?
Basically, I'm just concerned that we don't open up the B and see our data.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I come from Madera Unified, and I oversaw research, evaluation, and assessment. So, data privacy is incredibly important to me. As a company, we are in compliance with NIST, which is a national cybersecurity framework.
Staff, would that security definition of that security procedure be within our contract? Is it mentioned in the contract? So, let's say we do have a problem down the road, that there is, the contract speaks to that, their obligation to provide it?
It is. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I can also add, we did have, anytime we get a contract, we run it through any of our folks that deal with student data and privacy to make sure it aligns with any of the expectations we have in the district, and it did.
Trustee Sellers.
Just because Trustee Corio isn't here, can you clarify what languages the program can translate to?
Yeah, so currently, it's available both English and Spanish, and we are working on additional language models as well.
Thank you for the question.
Yeah, no, it's a good question.
We've already asked about Punjabi.
Yeah.
President Singh, if I could just add one more thing, please, and to answer Trustee Solis's question as well. We have our assessment department. So, we have our assessment administrator, Eric Winrek, who runs our reports now. He assists with many things that we need. He's also running our entire assessment program for the district. And so, as our needs continue to grow, and we add programs, and we do new things, his time, you know, he has so much time, right, in the day. And so, this is a great tool. We feel it's a great tool for us to just really help to sort of expedite some of those pieces and to allow us that quicker evaluation of our programs and the things that we're doing in Central Unified.
Trustee Francis and Trustee Solis.
We have many languages at Central, but I think the two more predominant ones are gonna be Punjabi and Mong. So, if that's something that could be on the forefront of your work, we'd be grateful for that, and I'd like to make a motion to approve, although I know he's going to have another question, but motion to approve.
Well, let's...
I'm not a...
All right.
I need a second now.
I'll be more than glad to second.
Oh, it is an information item. There is no motion to date on this item.
So, my intention is to support this item. The reason I was asking is just to make sure that it was included, but also, I would request that staff makes a written proposal to the contractee of the languages that we're interested in, so they know without a doubt Central Unified is interested in these languages. That's it. And I'll second his motion.
Well, no need for a motion tonight. It's only an information item, so we will have this returned as consent at our next meeting. Thank you. We move on to information item number two, Receive Information Regarding Revised Board
We move on to information item number two, receive information regarding revised board policies. Doctor Bro, uh, sorry, Assistant Superintendent Boatright, Iqbal, Dr. Lopez, all three of you.
All of us, yeah.
All of us.
So I'm gonna go ahead and get started tonight. So we have Board Policy fifty-one, twenty-six, which is listed tonight. I just want to let you know that that is a repeat from an item that was, it's already added into your packet. So these were brought in on June twenty-fifth, so they'll be approved actually at the next board meeting. So let me continue then with the new policies that are added. So I have Board Policy fifty-one, thirty-one point nine. This is the Board Policy for Academic Honesty. This policy has been updated to address prohibited and permitted student use of technology, including artificial intelligence, as it relates to academic honesty. The policy has also been updated to include that a student with a disability be permitted to use technology for any purpose for which technology is identified in the student's individualized education program. The next one that I have tonight is Board Policy fifty-one, forty-five point six. This is regarding parent and guardian notifications. This policy has been updated to clarify the importance of effective communication from the district and/or school site to families, and that a parent guardian's signature acknowledging receipt of the annual notifications is not required. Board Policy six thousand is Concepts and Roles. This policy is updated to align concepts with other policies and incorporate concepts of equity and inclusion. I also have Board Policy six-one, four-two point eight. This is Comprehensive Health Education. This policy has been updated to reflect the new U.S. Surgeon General's guidance related to the impact of social media on children and adolescents. The policy has also been updated to include the requirement that districts offer health education courses to middle or high school students that include mental health instruction. I have a couple more. I also have Board Policy sixty-one, forty-three. This is Courses of Study. This policy has been updated to expand the list of characteristics for which the district may not, on the basis of the student's actual or perceived characteristic, provide any course separately or require or refuse participation by any student to more closely align with the law. I also have Board Policy sixty-one, fifty-four. This is the Board Policy for Homework and Make-Up Work. This policy has been updated to add that meaningful homework assignments can be a valuable extension of student learning, time, provide enrichment, and insist students in developing good study habits. Homework and/or makeup work shall be assigned when necessary to support classroom lessons, enable students to complete unfinished assignments, or review and apply academic content for better understanding. And lastly, I have Board Policy six-one, six-two point five. This is on student assessment. This policy has been updated to reflect that prohibited and permitted student use of technology in relation to assessment via specified in Board Policy fifty-one, thirty-one point nine, which is academic honesty. And then also Board Policy six-one, six-three point four, which is student use of technology. It also references the new law, which is AB one fourteen, which includes long-term English learners as a numerically significant student subgroup, and that state interim informative assessments may be used to communicate with students' parents and guardians and for use in identifying professional development.
All right. I have the Board Policy three, four, zero, zero, Management of District Asset and Accounts. It states that superintendent to submit a district financial report of district financial status and add layers to prevent fraud. The second one is Board Policy three, five, five, one. It's Food Services Operation and Cafeteria Fund. It states updated, it says the districts are required that breakfast and lunch available to all students. Then I have the next one is Board Policy three, five, five, Nutrition Program Compliance. It's updated, it says the policy prohibits discrimination based on race, color, national origin, sexual orientation, gender, identity, or disability. And then the last one is an exhibit. It just states if we have to file a complaint, it gives address and where to file the complaint. Thank you.
Good evening. I have Board Policy five, one, four, one point six, Students' Health Services, which adds language to increase equity in providing health services through telehealth options for students at school. This Board Policy also provides preventative programming and intervention strategies. We currently already provide those services through the mobile bands and clinics for medical, dental, and vision. And for mental health, we have Care Solus. We also have Board Policy six-one, four, one points, four, six point four, Differential Graduation and Competency Standards for Students with Disabilities. This policy is updated to reflect the new law SB one-one-four and one-four-one, which specifies that students with disabilities who enter ninth grade in the twenty-two, twenty-three academic year and later are exempt from district-established graduation requirements. All coursework that is in addition to the state course requirements for graduation, if the IEP states it. The student's IEP must provide both the following requirements, that the student qualifies for alternate assessments, and the student completes the state standards-aligned coursework. Board Policy six-one, five, nine point two, Non-Public, Non-Secretarian School and Agency Services for Special Education. Policy is updated to reflect a December twenty-twenty-two Davis Joint Unified School District Agreement with the U.S. Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights, regarding the use of seclusion and restraint as it relates to a free, appropriate public education for students with disabilities placed in non-public schools. It adds language relating to payment to NPS and NPA for tuition and fees as applicable for the students with disabilities who are enrolled in programs or receive services provided by the NPS or NPA pursuant to the contract. It also adds language related to superintendent and designee ensuring that any contract with the NPS or NPA contains a requirement to comply with district policy, procedures, and practices related to student rights, health, and safety. Administration recommends that the policies are brought back on August thirteenth Board Agenda for Action. We are free to answer any questions.
Questions or comments on any of the items from the board at this time? Trustee Solis?
I just want to make sure I understand. On item?
Mike, please. Yeah.
On item three, five, five, one, B, P, Food Service Operations. On the second page, the middle of the page, it's making reference that it gives authority to the governing body, I'm assuming this body, authorizing them to expand individuals that we serve meals to. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. With the success of our food programs, I'd like to expand that even more, but that's for another time. I just want to make sure that was correct. Thank you.
Trustee Krefa?
Thank you, President Singh. I want to ask you, Dr. Boatright, about the Board Policy for, I think it was fifty-one, thirty-one, the academic honesty. That's the one regarding emerging technology, right? So can you go over which kinds of technology does this proposed Board Policy allow students to use with regards to coursework?
So all of our students have a Chromebook. They have access to a Chromebook. I, I would like to mention if Superintendent Davis might like to chime in. We do have a committee that's being formed to address academic honesty and also to really look at artificial intelligence and how that is going to be used in Central Unified, those processes and procedures. Oh, there you go. That's all.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to where, where we're going to be drawing the line, you know? Obviously, you know, how Friday, putting in your essay prompt into ChatGPT would be unacceptable, but would putting your citations in Purdue Owl be acceptable, for example, to help with annotations?
Yeah, and I think, I think that that's something that that, that group is going to review. You know, this is the twenty-first century, right? We have students that are, they learn differently. They're digital learners. And so we're not going to limit their access, but I think that there also need to be parameters put into place to make sure that, that we can actually see our students learning and that they're not overly relying on technology.
Yeah, I, I agree one hundred percent. I'm just very curious as to where the technological line of plagiarism, cheating versus assistance tools will be. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No other questions? We'll have this item returned since, since a few board members had reached out on this item. We'll have it returned as action. Yep, yep.
Thank you. One more. So Board Policy number sixty-one, fifty-four, Homework, Make-Up Work. Didn't we have this or a similar Board Policy approved at a earlier board meeting this year?
We did. So that's Board Policy fifty-one, twenty-one on Grades and Evaluation. And so you did approve that Board Policy. We are just putting the final touches on the AR that accompanies that. And I know that you had asked to, to see that once it's complete, and so we'll, we'll make sure that you have a chance to review that as well. But it addresses the fact that when a student is absent, that they do have that opportunity to make up those assignments, and they also have opportunities to retake assessments when they fail and earn a certain percentage on those assessments.
Thank you. And how is this Board Policy separate than that one? The sixty-one, fifty-four? Is it, this one is just homework versus entire course?
Right. So this one is more about the content of homework and what its purpose is.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We'll have this item returned under action for at our next meeting. Item number three, receive information for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year for maintenance operations and transportation. Director Bott.
Good evening, Board President Singh, Superintendent Davis, and board members. Tonight, we have three contracts that are coming to you that support the maintenance and operations of the district. We have Home Depot Pro, purchasing filters for district-wide HVAC preventative maintenance. We have Johnson Controls Fire Protection that provides our annual fire inspections. And Westside Water, which provides our water testing and maintenance to our drinking water systems at Central High School, Houghton Kearney Elementary, Madison Elementary, and Roosevelt Elementary. Home Depot Pro is ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-four cents. Johnson Controls Fire Protection is a hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-six cents. And Westside Water is seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. All three of these proposals were under the bid threshold of a hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars for the twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four year. Administration is recommending this item be placed on the August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four Board Agenda for Action. After answering any questions the board may have.
Trustee Solis and then trustee Mailing?
Uh, this goes to our financial officer. Have you reviewed?
Your, your microphone.
Financial Officer, have you reviewed the process they're gonna use for the staff to, to order these items or pick up these items? And is it your recommendation that there are enough checks and balances to avoid any misuse of it?
We have a digital PO process, so everything has to be approved in a process. So in addition to Mr. Bott, I have to approve it, and then we have our PO manager who approves it. So we have a process, digital process in place.
So you're approving this?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Trustee Mailing?
I just had a quick question on the Westside Water. I'm, I'm for it. But do you know if Houghton Kearney, are they drinking water from the well there, or is that, are they bringing it in?
They're still bringing it in.
So what would this, what would this be for?
We're still required to test the water monthly. We have to provide a chlorine injection system. They have to do monthly testing and still report it to the state of California.
For washing their hands and so forth. Okay. Thank you.
If no other questions, and if there's no questions about it, we'll have it returned under consent. Thank you. And item number four, and for the rest of the evening, Director Rodriguez. But item number four is receive information regarding Shields and Raleigh Elementary School Playground Equipment Proposal.
Thank you again, Board President, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis. Tonight, for your information, it's a proposal from Game, the Game Time Company to procure playground equipment for the Shields and Raleigh Elementary School project. The playground equipment was listed as an owner furnished, owner-installed item on the project drawings. So this proposal is through a nationally recognized Omni cooperative purchasing contract that is available to local school districts and public agencies. By removing certain items, such as the playground equipment product, from the project allows the district some savings by eliminating the middleman on markups for labor and, and materials, overhead and profit. The Game Time Playground brand is used at multiple, at multiple sites that we have, and replacement parts are available. This particular model is covered with a lifetime limited warranty. As a result, administration believes that this purchase is in the best interest of the district and is recommending that this item be placed on the August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four Board Agenda for Action. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this item.
Trustee Solis?
With facilities past decisions about not wanting, wanting to plant trees because of the maintenance, are you taking in consideration providing some sort of a shade thing, tarp thing over this equipment?
Absolutely. That's one of the things we, we look in. This is, this particular playground is similar to Tilly Elementary School with the large shade sails over, over the playground equipment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Krefa?
Thank you, President Singh. Trustee Solis said something very interesting. You said that we don't have an interest in planting trees?
Our past, that's the superintendent wants to speak to, our past facility, I guess you call them director, had problems with trimming trees. We were really good at cutting trees down, but we weren't really good at planting them because we didn't want to trim them again. Whether that's still the, the unwritten policy, I don't know, but I haven't seen that many trees planted on our sites.
Thank you, President Solis, or trustee Solis. That is something I, I'm concerned with as well. Do we have a no tree planting policy?
Not that I'm aware of. Actually, we have several, a lot of trees on our projects, and what we do is that there's a standard that our grounds department wants, or, 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 there's some trees that are dangerous. And so they omit those. So they give us a list. We give that to the consultant, and those trees are planted.
And if there's a desire for broader conversation, we can have it returned as an information item.
Right. Okay, yeah. I understand it's not agenda, I just would be interested in seeing us planting more trees. Thank you.
If, if there's an objection, we can have this returned as consent. Thank you, Director Rodriguez. Moving on to item number four, or sorry, five, receive information regarding Justin Garza High School Athletics Complex Scoreboards Proposal.
Thank you again, Board President, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis. This item is a, is an information item, is a proposal from Dectronics to procure five scoreboards for the Athletic Increment, Increment Number Two project. The scoreboards were listed as an owner furnished, contractor-installed items on our drawings. The proposal comes through through a nationally recognized Omni cooperative purchasing contract that is available to our district. Again, by removing certain items, such as the, the scoreboards from the project, but we leave the actual structure remaining in there for the contractor to install, allows us some, some savings. This cooperative purchase, purchasing streamlines the buying process to our district by meeting all of the state and local competitive bidding requirements on purchases pursuant to Public Contract Code one, zero, two, nine, eight. This particular manufactured item, Dectronics, is used at our stadium, at our track, at the Central High School baseball and softball fields, and, and our Central East High School baseball field. As a result, administration believes that this purchase is in the best interest of the district and is recommending this item be placed on the August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four Board Agenda for Action. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on this item.
Trustee Solis?
If you have our earlier conversations, I'm assuming these scoreboards are gonna have a place in case corporate sponsors want to have their logo up there. There, there's a room up there, or it's on the screen?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Sellers?
Is there a scoreboard for the JV baseball, or is it just JV softball?
There is a scoreboard for JV baseball. JV baseball, JV softball, varsity baseball, varsity softball, and soccer.
It's just labeled baseball. I just noticed it doesn't say JV in front of it.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and Director Rodriguez, just want to, just. And Director Rodriguez, just wanted to just highlight again that the decision made tonight may create a different rendering for the concept of the soccer. Just to make sure we make note of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no objection, we can have this returned under consent. Thank you, sir. We'll move on to item number six. Receive Information Regarding Justin Garza High School Aquatics Complex Project Deductive Change Order from Construction Management Service Agreement, Director Rodriguez.
Thank you again, Board President, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis. This item, this information item is a change order from the construction manager for Justin Garza High School Aquatics Project for your review. The decrease to the project is due to the impacts implemented after this project originally bid. So essentially, this is a charge backed, a deduct from their service agreement due to some circumstances that they should have caught. So I'm kind of holding them accountable to, you know, kind of looking through these drawings. So I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding this item.
Doesn't look like any questions. I think we're appreciative to get the money back, and we'll have this returned under consent. Item number seven, Receive Information Regarding Justin Garza High School Aquatics Complex Project Change Orders for Bid Packages 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, 8, 9, 11, 12.
Thank you again, Board President, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis. For your information tonight, it's change orders for the multi-prime delivery method for packages 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, 8, 9, 11, and 12, and the attachments on the itemized summary for the Justin Garza High School Aquatics Project for your review. The increase to the project is due to the impacts implemented after this project was originally bid. Staff has reviewed and recommends that this item return to the board on August 13th, 2024 Board Agenda for Action. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this item.
Trustee Zeratas?
Thank you, Board Chair. In regards to the total increase, it's 3.3%. What is allowable? Was it five?
10.
10.
10.
So we're still far beneath that.
Yeah, we're really in good shape with that one there.
If no other comments or questions, we'll have this returned under consent at our next meeting. Thank you. And item number eight, Receive Information Regarding Shields and Brawley Elementary School Project Change Orders for Bid Packages 2 and 5, Director Rodriguez.
Thank you again, Board President, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis. For your information tonight, it's change orders for the multi-prime delivery method, packages 2 and 5, and the attachment on the itemized summary for Shields and Brawley Elementary School project for your review. The increase is, to the project, is due to impacts implemented after this project was originally bid. Staff has reviewed, along with the construction manager, and recommends that this item return to the board on August 13th, 2024 Board Agenda for Action. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this item.
Questions or comments from the board? If none at this time, we'll have it returned under consent at our next meeting. Thank you, Director Rodriguez.
Thank you.
We move on to Advanced Planning?
Thank you. Just a couple of reminders for you, and the calendar is attached. It seems a long time ago at the organizational meeting, but we did plan for August 6th as our mid-year special workshop. And so the topics at that workshop that you can expect, it'll be in part about nutrition, and a lot of questions that have come up over the course of the last six months about that should be a great part. And then the second half of it will be about student data and where we are starting the year and what we've learned from end of last school year. Also, draw your attention, while it's not on the advanced planning calendar, we do anticipate opening up, and we'll give you an announcement in advance, but opening up for name suggestions, following the board policy on naming a facility for Shields and Brawley, because we do need to get the name for that campus in front of you to make a determination on that. Single plans for every single school also come for the first time at our next board meeting, which is the night before school's starting. And some of our new hires that are leading schools will make arrangements over the next two meetings to introduce you to all of them as well.
Thank you. Any additional information, closing comments from any of the board members? With that a reminder, August 6th, from 6:00 to 9:00, will be our board workshop. Our next regular meeting of the board will be held here on Tuesday, August 13th, 2024, 6:00 p.m. for closed session, 7:00 p.m. for the public session, here in the district office, Room 13. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion by trustee Mailin. We have a second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 5-0 with trustee Krefan absent. Thank you all, have a wonderful evening.